Ladies and gentlemen, can I have your attention, please? Shh. Can I have your attention, please? I know we have a big crowd here, and we appreciate everybody coming out tonight to voice their opinions. Now, the room is only coded for 136 people. So, I'm going to ask the police, at this point, unless they're a presenter, to keep everybody else out in the hallway. We're already maxed out. Okay, second wall, excuse me, just for fire purposes, okay, there's that door down the stairs, through this, out the hallway to the left, down the stairs, beyond the elevator, and this door over here on my right, where Officer Mason is. That takes you all the way down to the basement. Restrooms are down in the basement. Okay, so those are our basic safety rules for this evening. So I appreciate your cooperation tonight. We have a heated agenda, and want everybody's cooperation, please. So with that, if everybody would please rise and join me in saluting the flag. Justice for all. And if you all remain standing before you sit, I want to get you. Unfortunately, Counselor John Powers is not present tonight, and the reason is he lost his daughter yesterday. So he's in Florida right now, making plans. So I would like a moment of silence in memory of Deborah Kegluso. And for those of you who did not hear the clerk, please shut off your cell phones. Thank you.
Roll club the members. Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers is absent, Counselor Riordan is absent, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Calendar item number one, CZ 13-06, hearing called is ordered on the application of Sterling Suffolk Racecourse LLC requesting amendments of the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to the PDD-1 district and the definition of gaming facility.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before the mayor speaks as one of the presenters, I want to let everybody know what the rules are right now. We're going to have the presenters come up. There's going to be about four or five speakers from Mohegan Sun, Suffolk, the mayor, and they're going to make their presentation. Then we'll call for proponents. Now, I know there's a lot of people in favor and a lot of people against. I would ask that the people in favor pick one representative to represent them as speaking because we cannot have them all speak tonight. And then I will ask for a raise of hands for those that are in favor of it after this person makes their presentation. The same thing holds with the opponents. Have one speaker representing the opponents. And remember that we are talking about a zoning change. We are talking about a zoning change and nothing else. The people in Revere have already spoken as far as saying yes for casinos, and the applicant, is that coming in now, for, excuse me, for zoning changes. So we will ask that anybody that does come up to speak, keep their comments to the zoning and nothing else, please. Mr. Mayor is a proponent.
My name is John Rivera, Assistant Attorney General of the City of Yale Committee, and this hearing is being held unlawfully. It wasn't properly advertised, as it should be, ahead of time, and we have the Revere Journal for the past two weeks, several weeks, and I'm here with the resident of Revere to point this out. Because it was not advertised properly, this hearing cannot go forward. That's clear.
Well, we checked that out already, sir. And the ruling is that the property in question is the same. The address is basically around the corner from same building compared to McLoughlin Highway, compared to 111 Waldemere Ave.
The business has an address listed with the Secretary of State's office, and they have to pick one.
And that was recently changed, sir.
Well, and then the notification needs to be correct. Therefore, it's not correct, and this hearing cannot go forward.
Well, that is your opinion, sir, and the hearing will go forward. And if you choose, after we make a decision, to appeal it, you have 20 days to do that. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Honorable members of the city council, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity here this evening to talk about a zoning change that is being proposed at the Suffolk Downs site. As you know, back on November 5th, by a margin of almost 2 to 1, Revere voters came out to support a casino, a resort-style casino at Suffolk Downs. Subsequent to the vote, myself, along with members of my administration, on November 5th, met with Suffolk Downs to let them know that it was our intention to go forward, as has been laid out in our host community agreement that allows for development on the Revere site, and that it was our intention to go forward with a plan to develop on a Revere-only project. Along the way, in addition to many other things that have had to happen, last Wednesday, Suffolk Downs reached an agreement with Mohegan Sun. And with me tonight is Mitch Eddis, the CEO of the Mohegan Sun, and Richard Fields, majority owner of Suffolk Sterling. We are very, very excited about this prospect of a casino located on the Revere-only site. As I say, by a 2 to 1 margin, Revere voters came out and voted for it. They voted for jobs, 4,000 jobs. They voted to save 1,000 jobs at the track. They voted for economic development. They voted for $50 million in transportation improvements, and they voted for collateral investment opportunities throughout the entire region. So, that brings us to today. In order to make this project go forward the way that we want it to, we are requesting some zoning relief. I will not lay out the terms of the zoning relief. I'll leave that in the capable hands of Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio. But I will say that when this has all come to fruition, and with the support of the city council, by endorsing these zoning changes, you are going to see a world-class, first-class gaming facility at Suffolk Downs. With that, I will turn it over to Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio, where he will lay out for you the relief requested so that we can move forward with the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, City Council.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Good evening, City Council President Novoselfsky. Good evening, counselors. Thank you, Mayor Rizzo. My name is Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio, and I am here tonight representing the Suffolk Downs racetrack, as you all know. My office is located at 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere, Massachusetts. I am here tonight on behalf of Suffolk Downs and its petition for the redistricting or rezoning of the PDD-1 district located along Winthrop Avenue in Revere, Massachusetts. As you know, the purpose of this rezoning of the PDD-1 district is to facilitate and allow for the development and operation of a first-class, and I mean first-class, resort casino in the city of Revere by Mohegan Sun. The mayor has alluded to two of our team members who are here tonight. I'm going to ask them to step up and address the city council. The first is Chip Tuttle. He is very well-known to all of you. Chip is currently the chief operating officer of Suffolk Downs. Along with Chip is Mitchell Eddis. Mitchell is the current CEO of the Mohegan Tribal Gaming Authority. Upon the conclusion of their remarks, I'll step back up, and I will summarize the zoning relief that we are requesting. As is the norm with this honorable body, I fully expect that this matter will be sent to subcommittee and reheard on December 9th of 2013, next Monday at 5:00. That being said, I would first call Chip Tuttle. Thank you.
Chip, before you get on, just a correction on that time. That time will be at 4:30 next Monday, here in the chamber, for that subcommittee meeting. Name and address for the record, sir.
Chip Tuttle, Chief Operating Officer, Suffolk Downs, also known as Sterling Suffolk Downs, 525 McLoughlin Highway. Mr. Council President, counselors, thank you. As always, it's a privilege to be before you discussing business on behalf of Suffolk Downs, your neighbor of the last 78 years. We're very excited that last week, we announced a partnership with Mohegan Sun, a world-class gaming company based right here in New England. We were here earlier today to talk more about that in a moment. Mitchell Eddis is going to come up and talk a little bit about their vision for this development. We appreciate you entertaining these zoning changes that we're here to talk about tonight. We are, as you know, very excited about our partnership with Revere. As the mayor mentioned, Revere did say yes, by an overwhelming margin, welcoming gaming development to its community. The zoning changes that you are taking into consideration are a result of zoning for the parcel that includes our property in Revere that was passed years ago, I believe, 1996. So clearly, the city has contemplated gaming development on this parcel for a long time. We're very appreciative of that and this opportunity. We are, we do have a valid host community agreement that we are working on amending with the city in real time, and look forward to coming back to this council sometime in the near future to report on that. And we have a valid land use question, a valid ballot question from November 5th that we're very excited about as well. So with that, just as background, I will turn it over to our new partner, the CEO of Mohegan Sun, Mitchell Eddis. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Mitchell Eddis, CEO, Mohegan Tribal Gaming Authority, 1 Mohegan Sun Boulevard, Longusville, Connecticut. And I am so excited to be here today, this evening, after having spent the day here in Revere and talking to a lot of the citizens. There's no doubt this is going to be an amazing place to build an amazing world-class destination. This has all happened very fast, as you know, but we've been working very, very hard. Our architects, we have a world-class design team from Coen Peterson and Fox. They've been working almost nonstop. I'm not sure any of them had time to have turkey in order to get ahead of the curve here and bring this to you today. We're going to build an amazing resort casino destination here. A destination that's not only going to be a regional gathering place, but a destination that's going to be a national and international tourist destination, one that's going to capitalize on all the people coming into the greater Boston area for tourism. We're designing something with a ton of energy, something that has a huge attraction factor, and a place that is going to a must-see for visitors coming to the greater Boston area. It's going to be very exciting, and now I'm going to attempt to step up here and show it to you. Or maybe you can move it back. Do I need to take this with me? Okay. This gives you some ideas of the massing study. Now, this is just a massing study, basically, to show that we can get everything on. However, we do have segments, and I can explain to you essentially the flow of how this works. So the T-stop is over here, you can see it. This is the beginning of the retail corridor. And this retail is full of energy shops. It'll be full of restaurants, different kinds of attractions that will guide you through this side. This is the main entrance, okay? And you can go the other way. Again, you get back on the same spine. You go over here to the Casino Hotel, which is right here, over here to the Alternative Hotel. It's the branded other hotel over here. This is about 300 rooms. We're anticipating this to be 150 to 200 rooms. This is the casino space. It's going to be alive. It's going to have amazing views of the racetrack. You can see it's curved, and it has great optics there. We'll have windows in it, so there will be views. When the horses aren't running, they will close up, so you're not looking at emptiness, but it'll be an amazing concept as far as a casino. This is some future program space. Now, we've only been doing this for a short amount of time, so we don't really have the exact programming of this. But through here, you'll have the shops and restaurants. This could be some other sort of, could be a continuation of the retail, some specialty dining. But this will be space that is going to be developed for future use. It will be part of the original project. We just don't quite have it down quite yet, and it's only been a few days. This is the branded third-party hotel as opposed to Casino Hotel. This is the main entrance, as I said, and you can see it gives you a great shot of both hotels, as well as getting into the main spine of the property. This will be your primary gaming area. There'll be some multi-use space underneath as part of the hotel. Could be used for some small meetings or so forth. It'll give us some real functionality here as well. So we really feel we put here is incredible destination. The decor, obviously, you know, we've just about got the space here. The decor is next, but will be very energetic, very, for those of you in the audience or here at the council who've been to Mohegan Sun in Connecticut, it'll have that feel to it. But we don't build Native American here. We will build something as far as decor that's reflective of the region. I spoke to a lot of people today, and it became very clear to me going through those meetings that it has to have that Revere Beach feeling and harkening back to the history of the Revere Beach because it's so important to this area and how great it was. Plus, don't forget, the beach is right here, and there will be views from the hotels of the beach. It's very, very spectacular for a resort destination. So that gives you some ideas of the flow and the massing. And here, although I did say this morning, we don't quite have exact ideas of what it's going to look like, we do have a little idea of what it's going to look like. And here is a little view of how we anticipate this to look. This is the view up the main entrance, where you can see those kind of tiered trees there on the bottom. That's what you're looking at up here, this grand sense of arrival, yet it has that Revere Beach feel, tremendous amount of green space, which is great for the environment, and something that is truly spectacular, and something that Revere can really be proud of. So with that, I'd like to leave you with that and turn it back over to Jerry. Thank you.
Again, counselors, my presentation will be brief, as I'm sure this issue will be much more fully vetted at the subcommittee meeting. That being said, I'd like to focus on something that Chip Tuttle picked up, and that's the previous zoning for this PDD-1 parcel. It's important to remember that this parcel, solely located in the city of Revere, was already rezoned in 1996 and then amended again in 2007, with the intent, with the intent of allowing a gaming complex and hotels. So again, we're talking 1996 and 2007. That's well before any vote on this issue. That's well before this city council even was sworn in. Again, it's clear, the city council's intent, the city's intent, the zoning took place quite a while ago. The intent was for this parcel of land to situate a gaming complex and hotels to accommodate that gaming complex. That being said, what are we here for today? You may be all asking, well, if it's already accommodating a gaming complex, why the application? Well, it's because, as Mitchell said, we want to build a first-class resort. And to build a first-class resort, we need some zoning modifications. And those zoning modifications are really for the purpose of allowing the casino to be situated in the city of Revere. When detailing what that specific zoning relief is, I'm going to cite to a legal brief that we've submitted, and I, at some point, will be given out to you, and I ask that you consider the points raised and the arguments issued in that brief with regard to the public welfare. I'd also ask that you incorporate by reference the application for this zoning relief in its entirety. And they will both give you a detailed version of the zoning relief requested. That being said, the first part of the zoning is simply a reclassification of the definition of gaming facility itself. When you folks first put this ordinance together back in 96 and '07, you had a definition for gaming facility. Since 2007, there has been state legislation on point, and so we want to make sure that the city definition is in line and comports with the state definition. So that's the first request. The second request pertains to the rights of a developer like Mohegan Sun to develop. We're asking that, after this vote, that right be granted as a matter of right. Those are the two legal issues. With regard to the specifics, the specific dimensional changes, we're asking for a height change. Currently, in many parts of the city of Revere, the height is allowed up to 180 feet. Currently, for this PDD-1 area, it's 140. So we're asking for another 40 feet with regard to height. With regard to setbacks, the current ordinance requires a 100-foot setback off of Washburn Street. We're leaving that setback in place. We're simply asking that after that 100 feet, that the first structure be allowed to be as tall as 70 feet. I believe the previous ordinance set the limit at 50. So we're basically asking for 20 feet after 100 feet. With regard to the setback on Winthrop Avenue, it's important to note that the current ordinance reflects a 50-foot setback, but that if there is a petitioner seeking a casino or a hotel or a sports arena, that that be pushed out to 100. We're simply asking for a change that allows that 50-foot setback to be allowed in all situations. And again, that's a 50-foot setback off of Winthrop Avenue. And the final two changes are, one, the floor area ratio, known as FAR. It is currently at 1. We are asking that it be raised to 2. We contemplate that the project will be at 1.5, 1.6, 1.7, 1.8, somewhere in that range, but we feel that a FAR of 2 will be more than enough. I point out to the council that right around the corner from this parcel on Revere Beach, the WTA district has a FAR of 3. And here, we are only asking for a FAR of 2. And then finally, we're asking for a different definition when it comes to calculating parking. Because of the resort nature of this casino, Mohegan Sun is actually asking for the ability for more parking. So our parking formula actually is based on the number of gaming spots. We're actually providing for .75 spots for every gaming position. So hypothetically, if there's a blackjack table and there's six spots at that blackjack table, we would want to have four parking spots to accommodate the people for one blackjack table. So in essence, we're going to have a significant amount of parking for this parcel. Again, this is only a brief summary. I fully expect to rehash this all in the subcommittee with some more detailed drawings and depictions. I do leave with one closing thought, and it's an important closing thought. This city council, this city, has been behind a gaming complex for this parcel since 1996, at least 1996. And that's reflected, one, by the zoning change in 96, two, by the zoning amendment in 2007, and finally, it's affirmed by the voters of Revere themselves with a 61-39 vote that took place, took place back on November 5th, in affirmation of a resort casino on the Revere parcel of Suffolk Downs. That being said, I look forward to discussing this next Monday. Thank you.
Counselor, I know I can't see you, but is there anybody else on the team that would like to say anything? Nope?
Counselor, again, it's consistent with the policy of this esteemed council. We will defer to the subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, are there any other proponents? And again, I ask for one representative, the yeses on the proponents, to speak on behalf. Name and address for the record. You have two minutes, sir.
Hi, City Council President, City Council. My name is Richard Curran. I live right down on Barrett Street. I'm also a member of the best local in the country, Local 22. We got a few guys back here. And the city of Revere voted 2 to 1 for this casino, right where it's sitting, almost. And so we support that, and we support the zoning changes. Thank you very much.
Giving a few extra points to our legislature. Madam, to the podium, please. Name and address for the record and who you're representing.
Yes. Rosely Vincent, 350 Revere Beach Boulevard, and I'm Chief of Staff for State Representative Kathy Reinstine. Unfortunately, the representative couldn't be here, but she wanted me to make sure that the honorable council knew her support, and I'll just read a statement from her. She would like to express her full support for Suffolk Downs' proposed amendments to the city of Revere zoning ordinances. Approving the requested changes will enable Suffolk Downs and Mohegan Sun to go forward with the gaming development that was strongly supported by the Revere residents. This development will generate thousands of jobs for local families, significant community investment, as well as economic development for the entire region. And on a personal note, as a lifelong Revere resident, I echo the words of Representative Reinstine and fully support Suffolk Downs' request. Thank you.
You're kind of twisting my arm here.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was a one rep per...
Well, we're asking one rep per proponents or one representative for the opponents. Who are you representing, sir?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Brian Dougherty. I'm the General Agent of the Building and Construction Trades Council.
We honor the union request.
I appreciate that, and it means a lot to me, and it means a lot to the folks in this room. A lot of our members have taken time out of their day, and a lot of my colleagues are in the room with us, representatives from the various construction trades, to come here and speak on behalf of this team here that's done great work, and we want to be proponents of this project. Just recently in the paper, one quick thing is, you know, there was an article in the Globe last week, and it's a regional paper, and it said that, on the front page, that it's been a good resurgence coming down the pike for construction trades. But it also said in that same column that over the past five years, our members have lost their homes, they haven't been able to educate their children, they haven't been able to put food on the table, and we have those same concerns now. And this will provide for us, who we have thousands of members in this region, and also thousands of members in the city of Revere, an opportunity to go back to work, provide for their family, and build a stronger Revere. I am just here to speak in favor of this project. It looks like a great thing. We are enthusiastic about it, and the Building Trades Council is here to speak in favor. I appreciate the opportunity to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Eric Redding. I live at 37 Maguire Road, Sutton, Massachusetts. And I appreciate your time here, and I know you've been in the...
Who are you representing, sir?
I'm representing the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades.
Thank you.
I am Revere, born and raised. I don't live here anymore, but my family is still here. My parents are lifelong residents, and my brother and his family are lifelong residents. I represent the apprenticeship and training office of my union. And what I want you to really grasp is the amount of opportunity that is happening with this type of project for the young men and women of this city. There is a commitment to put people in this project. The types of jobs that will be generated are good jobs, good-paying jobs with health care and with pensions. Being in charge of a training program, I'm in charge of painters, drywall finishers, glass and glazing, to name a few of the trades that represent through my union. These young people and all residents of Revere will be able to apply to this union and start an apprenticeship and have a trade that will last them a lifetime. And I've often said, if everything changed for me today, the one thing that I would always have is my trade, and I would always be able to make money somehow and survive, and this is what is on the table for everybody here.
Thank you, sir.[1798.82] Thank you, sir. And I would like to remind the union folks that are coming up, we are dealing with zoning only, if you would. Try and relate, relate to the zoning ordinance that we're talking about. Mr. Rogers, go ahead. Name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. For the record, my name is Rich Rogers, and I'm the Executive Secretary Treasurer of the Greater Boston Labor Council. We're a federation of 161 unions whose jurisdiction is 24 communities in metropolitan Boston, including the city of Revere. I'm here to speak in favor of the zoning change. As you're all aware, the terms of Suffolk Downs' gaming proposal have changed, but the benefits remain the same. Should a gaming facility be built on Suffolk Downs property in Revere, thousands of our building trades members will be put to work. Although the employment situation's got better in the building trades, we still haven't recovered from the 2008 fiscal meltdown, and that's still too many men and women struggling to find employment. When the facility opens, it will provide thousands of permanent jobs with living wages and benefits for people that desperately need decent jobs. These jobs, in most cases, don't require college degrees, and these are the exact people who've lost the most opportunities as technology and the disappearance of our manufacturing sector are leaving way too many people behind. And certainly, it will be a big boost to the city of Revere, as your host agreement provides significant resources for the city to allocate for public education, public safety, and other unmet needs. And it's a real boost for Greater Boston, as it'll enhance the existing tourism and convention industry. I've been involved, in one form or another, with this proposal for an awfully long time, and I urge you to proceed with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Did I hear you say, "Oh, Rose"? Why is that? My name is Rose Napolitano, and I live in Cushman Ave in Revere for the lady in the front row's information. All I'm here to say is I represent the elderly of Revere, the senior citizens, who've been waiting a long time for this to come, as you can tell. That's all I got to say. We don't have much time left, so get going, okay?
Thank you, Rose. They always say, "A rose is a rose is a rose." Thank you, Rose. With that, with that, we will close this side of the hearing. Proponents, proponents, we will close this side of the hearing. Now, we will open it to opponents.
Take a break.
Oh, yeah. One, one, thank you very much, Counselor. For those of you who are in favor of this, because you didn't speak, raise your hands if you're in favor of it. I, I would say that's pretty overwhelming myself. It looks like all the yes votes from Revere came here tonight. Opponents, name and address for the record, please.
Elaine Anzalotti, 417 Revere Beach Parkway. I was here October 28th because of the zoning change with the trailer park. I told you why I didn't approve of it. I'll lose my sunlight, I'll lose my beautiful Boston view, and I'll be facing a Marriott Hotel. I was against that. Obviously, nobody has heard anything about it. That meeting has been on television since, and I was blocked out of it. I was not putting the newspaper either, the Journal, of the letter I've said to everyone here. Now, they want to stuff a casino in my front lawn. I live right across the street from there. We have enough of problems with traffic there, and I'll be here in traffic 24 hours a day. Now, the lady who spoke and said about me, she has a vulgar mouth. Very vulgar. And I don't care how many people boo me.
Elaine, Elaine, please, please don't make it personal. Just stick to the subject.
No, she said something about me, and I'm telling you.
Stick to the subject, please. Excuse me. Yes, sir, Mr. Anzalotti.
But I just don't approve of any of it, because it's going to change everything what I moved here for. I've been here for 16 years. Everybody here who is, wants it, why don't they move where I live? And I'll move where they live. They're not going to be affected by all this. We are. No one thought of us on that street, no one. So, that's all I have to say.
Eddie, please, please, Joe, please, leave her alone.
They could shoot me all they want, I really don't care.
So noted, Mrs. Anzalotti. Name and address for the record, sir.
Certainly. John Ribero, 15 James Ave, Winthrop, Massachusetts, Chairman of the Committee to Repeal the Casino Deal in Massachusetts. And regarding zoning, I'm not sure if you're aware, but hidden on the other side of Suffolk Downs is a small airport. Those planes might have trouble getting in if you raise the height of the building, so 180 feet. Other than that, I'm sure we all stand here today. We started this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A vote was taken on November 5th, a vote on a proposal that straddled two cities, Boston and Revere. That proposal was voted down.
Sir, would you stick to the subject of zoning, please?
I guess everybody else, everybody else, I know how this works. I've, I've been to this meeting before, it's happened before. If you're for the casino, you can talk about jobs, you could talk about all the benefits, but if you're against the casino, you get gavelled silent. That's exactly what this flag stands for, right? I didn't think so. I will continue.
Sir, sir.
The First Amendment of the Constitution...
Stick with the zoning, sir.
The First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America, which I'm sure some of these fine men and women wore the uniform for, to protect, says that I have the right to speak. If you want to hold me to two minutes, hold me to two minutes. And let me speak.
You have the right to speak upon the, upon the ruling of the chair, sir, and the discretion of the chair. And if you don't stick to...
By Wednesday, by Wednesday, I and a coalition of hundreds of people around the state will have submitted to the Secretary of State's office 75,000 certified signatures to repeal the casino law. So, regardless of what you do, we will make this move.
Time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, please, please, sit down. Sit. I'm getting, sit down, sir. Please sit down. Please sit down. Thank you. With that, can we have a raise of hands for those opposed to the zoning amendment? Raise your hand. So noted, so noted. Thank you. With, with that, with that hearing, no, no other comments, I will close this hearing. Sir.
I can't say...
Name and address for the record, sir.
Ed Devoe, 216 Crescent Ave, Beauchmont.
Are you a proponent or an opponent?
That's what I'm here to address. If you want me to choose one side, I'll say I'm a proponent, because I've been for the casino all along.
Thank you.
What I'm here to say, though, is I have some concerns, I have some questions about this zoning. I don't know when, how, and maybe you can educate me as to when it's going to take place. You're voting on some changes tonight, some major changes that, excuse me.
No, we're not voting on any changes tonight.
Okay.
There's only a public hearing.
When will that take place?
Next, I said, next Monday. It was noted that we will have a subcommittee meeting at 4:30, and then the subcommittee will come out with a report at the meeting, following that meeting at 6 o'clock.
That's great. So, you'll be doing that on Monday. All right. So, all I'm asking here is to all the counselors, as a resident of Beauchmont, which is going to be severely impacted by these changes, Beauchmont was going to be impacted in the past, we knew what was coming down, we spent a lot of time trying to understand what the plan was, what was being done traffic mitigation-wise, and I understand what's happened. We've got a deadline, we've got to move fast. But my concern is, when I see how high these buildings are, when I see how close they are to the parkway, when I don't hear anything about what changes, if any, have been made to traffic mitigation plans or additional relief for Beauchmont, because we're going to be even more impacted now, when I don't hear any of those things, and there are decisions being made, zoning decisions or otherwise, I get concerned. So, I'm looking at all of you here tonight to say, I'm from Beauchmont, there's a lot of other people from Beauchmont that are severely impacted. Your neighborhood is going to be impacted as well. I don't think as impacted as Beauchmont will be. So, yes, I'm an opponent, a proponent, rather, I have been all along, but I've got concerns, and I'm looking to all of you to watch out on our behalf for what's going to go down there and how it's going to happen. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. And hopefully, and hopefully, a lot of those questions will be answered next Monday at 4:30 here in the council chamber. So, with that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, I'm sorry, counselors, again, we're going to be at zoning next week, so I hope you'll hold back on your comments. I know Counselor Haas will not be here next week, and he has asked to make a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in 1996, we had envisions of heaven gambling on the proposed site currently. As far as the changes in zoning, I will be for it without question. I think it brings a lot of energy to the city, and it keeps my issue, along with the current mayor's issue, intact. We want gaming in Revere. There's differences. This location has to have minor changes to the zoning. So, I will be for it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll hear from the Ward 1 counselor, whose ward this project is in, Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief, because I know it's going to zoning, but there are a couple of things brought up. In 1996, I was on the council. I actually spearheaded that zoning change back then myself. I was on the committee of zoning, and I did it, actually went to Stop and Shop in the Tiger and all that, and it was all tied in together. And that's when we had the foresight that hope and gamble went there. And when I was council president last year, and the mayor started a mitigation package, I actually asked the mayor, and he did it with his wisdom, with his wisdom, because I knew that he's lost that chance of going down. With that being said, he drafted a mitigation that gave us, gave us a chance to put it in Revere and drafted it that way, that the people went to the ballots and voted, knowing that possibly could have went in Revere. I'm going to leave it at that, but I've mentioned that to a lot of people. Now, as far as Beauchmont goes, I've lived on Beauchmont all my life. I love Ed. I mean, the Beauchmont Improvement Committee is one of the best committees that exist. There's no way I would let anything happen down there that, that the quality of life would change. Trust me, this, this, if this is, if this is done for the city of Revere, and I have five children, all own houses in Revere, this will transform this city of Revere that no one's ever seen before in this state. You'll be proud to live here, and you're going to want to live here, and people want to, it'll be the number-one state, designated state to move to, trust me. You've got Mohican Suns, you've got the best. You've got the best people here. I've never seen one time that they did not have the interest of the people first. And that being said, I feel proud being for this. I am voting for this change 100%. Wouldn't even think twice or not. And I pray and hope, which I always did, that it goes solely in Revere. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. And I am going to close the hearing, but before everybody disperses, we have one piece of business that we want to take up. I'm going to ask suspension of rules. All in favor, all opposed? Voting so ordered. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I have a late communication, which I would ask a clerk to read into the record. It basically speaks for itself, and I would ask you, Mr. President, to call for roll call right after that.
Madam Clerk.
We have a late motion presented by Counselor Penta, that the city council approve the following resolution. Resolution affirming support for a gaming establishment located off of Winthrop Avenue. Whereas the mayor, city council, and citizens of Revere have consistently urged the owners of Suffolk Downs to locate all or more substantial portion of the proposed gaming establishment in the city of Revere. Whereas the mayor, city council, and citizens of Revere intended a flexible host-community agreement that allows for the location of a gaming establishment solely within the boundaries of Revere. Whereas the citizens of the city of Revere were aware that the proposed gaming establishment located off of Winthrop Avenue in the city of Revere might be located solely in Revere if the votes of East, if the voters of East Boston rejected the dual-community proposal. Whereas after the withdrawal of Caesars, Suffolk Downs made clear throughout the referendum campaign that it would find a new qualified gaming operator to manage and develop any proposed gaming establishment. And whereas, the results of the November 5th, 2013 referendum demonstrated overwhelming support for a gaming establishment located off of Winthrop Avenue by the votes of the Beauchmont neighborhood, which is the most impacted Revere neighborhood, and the citizens of Revere generally. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Revere City Council as follows. That the city council hereby ratifies and confirms the foregoing recitals and affirms its support and the support of its citizens of Revere for a gaming establishment located off of Winthrop Avenue entirely within the city of Revere. That the city council hereby affirms that the host-community agreement provides the flexibility for the location of a gaming establishment entirely within the city of Revere. And that the city council hereby confirms that the affirmative referendum vote, which was a land-use vote, remains in effect for the proposed Revere-only project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Giannino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, and Counselor Riordan is absent. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved.
And that concludes this hearing. And hopefully, for those who wish to speak again, to attend the zoning subcommittee meeting next Monday, December 9th, at 4:30 PM here in the council chamber. Five-minute recess. Mr. Chairman, name and address for the record, please.
And I'd, I'd like, here I am, and I'd just like to say that the board is a little disappointed. We thought everybody was here for us. Actually, we're here tonight to ask the city council to adopt a minimum residential factor at the maximum rate allowed by law to shift the tax to the commercial properties at 175%. They have always done this in the past, and we ask that that vote be taken tonight. Thank you.
We're on a public hearing. Yeah, on the public hearing, when are you going to do the other things? We're, we're on opponents, proponents right now. Okay. Are there any other proponents? Is that it, sir? Okay. Are there any other proponents? Name and address for the record, please.
George Anzoni, 141 Fenley Street, Revere, Mass. I'm the Director of Finance. I am also in favor of the shift of the minimal residential factor to 175%.
Sir, are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing and seeing, then we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing, then we'll call that, close that side of the hearing. Counselor Haas, you had something to say?
No, I'm just wondering about the appropriations we had earlier with George, if that has to be brought into this.
I understand that, sir. Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wondering if Mr. Varenja had any input in...
Just wondering if Mr. Varenja had any input into this decision.
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Varenja played a vital part. And he will explain that part right now.
Well, could you explain some of what you did?
It would take too long.
Because you were interested in calling me a few minutes ago several times.
Well, I can call you because I try to make sure you're up to speed on that.
Okay. Point taken. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. At this time, we have to close the hearing first. Okay, gentlemen and ladies, Madam Vice President? We'll close that side of the hearing, and at this time, what we're going to do is, we'll close the hearing. I did so. Where were you, sir? Sleeping again? Were you texting? Okay, with that, at this point, I would like to call for a suspension of rules. All in favor, all opposed? Voting so ordered. Counselor Rigo, committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier tonight, the City Council's Ways and Means Subcommittee met with one item on the agenda, which was a supplemental budget request from the mayor for fiscal year 2014. There were three items on that supplemental request. One was a $288,000 request for the Revere School Department. Another one was $57,000 for the Office of Planning and Community Development, and finally, there was an appropriation for $412,000 that we were told was going to be, actually, $340,000 for Revere contract negotiations. These items were passed in subcommittee. One thing that I would like to request is that we do get a breakdown of the $288,000 from the school department when that's available. Thank you.
Mr. Anzoni, can you handle that, Mr. Dakin?
I request that information from Superintendent Dakin.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, what we have to do is accept the report first, and on the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to accept and approve this portion.
On the mayor's, there's a roll call about supplemental appropriation.
Okay. With that, we're going to accept the recommendation of the committee with a roll call to make the appropriation.
That the city council hereby approves a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $288,885 for the school department budget, $57,500 for the Office of Planning and Community Development, and $337,268 for the fire队's unit. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, and Counselor Riordan is absent. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the supplemental appropriations have been approved.
Okay, the next thing we're going to talk about, the abatement on the Acts of Chapter 73, Section 4 of the Acts of 1986. Any comments from the counselors? Hearing none? All in favor, all opposed? Voting so ordered. And now on Section 4 of Chapters... Roll call on that, I'm sorry.
That the city council hereby adopts Section 4 of Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, and Counselor Riordan is absent. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the act has been accepted.
And just so everybody knows, that is to provide the relief to property taxpayers by increasing on their abatement of up to 100%. That's the next one, okay? So noted then.
For clarification, what you just voted was the cost of living increase to certain of the people who receive exemptions, that is, the elderly widows and widowers, and actually, the cost of living increase this year was 1.64%. So that adjusts some of the asset and income limitations.
Thank you for the clarification. And now we'll do the amendments of Chapter 126. Is that next?
Section 4.
Section 4.
Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986.
We just did that.
And what that is, is the additional, the ADA so-called, where we will up to double the exemption if the taxes increase over the base year.
Okay, so noted. Roll call, I guess.
That the city council hereby approves a cost of living adjustment for FY '14 in the amount of 1.64%. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, Counselor Riordan is absent. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the cost of living adjustment has been approved.
Now we'll do the residential factor.
That the city council hereby approves the minimum residential factor in the amount of 1.75%. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, Counselor Riordan is absent. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the minimum residential factor has been established for FY 2014.
Voting so ordered.
Mr. Chairman, Counsel win.
Mr. Chairman.
We'd like to thank you for your continued support. Thank you.
Calendar item number six, Report of the Appointment Subcommittee.
Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met, and we had the following individuals before us. The appointment of Taurati Constructions, Inc., P.O., Box 738, Marlboro, Mass., 01752, as a licensed drain layer. Next was the appointment of Stephen Demato, 57A Beacon Street, Winthrop, Mass., as a constable. The third item was the appointment of Nathaniel Green, 75 Brow Ave, Braintree, Mass., as a constable. And the fourth and last on the agenda this afternoon was the appointment of Le Montagne Brothers, Inc., 37 Federal Hill Road, Oxford, Mass., 01540, as a licensed drain layer. If it's the will of the council, we take them all at once. The committee, the subcommittee on appointments voted unanimously in favor of all these appointments. It's the wish of the council to vote them all at once.
We can do that. Any other comments from any of the counselors? On the recommendation of the committee, all in favor? Roll call? No?
Roll call on the Appointment Subcommittee report. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, Counselor Riordan is absent. Counselor Zambudo is absent, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number seven, Motion presented by Counselors Haas and Gino that the mayor requests Mass Highway to provide a status update on Council Order Number 13-219 relative to the repair of the Cassassa overpass. This motion was ordered on September 16th, 2013, and the city has yet to receive a response to Mayor Rizzo's letter dated September 19th addressed to Mr. Mark Kratman of Mass Highway.
Counselor Haas.
It speaks for itself, the motion, and the reason it was put in after Counselor Gino put it in originally, it's the delay in the response to the city.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, and I agree with Counselor Haas, and it definitely is a serious matter. You know, there was an accident on that bridge months and months and months ago, it is yet to be, years ago, and it's yet to be addressed, and I feel like it's just insulting to not even hear back from the letter that our mayor sent for us on our behalf. So we definitely want a response for the city to know what's going on because it's a serious safety hazard. Thank you.
Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor, all oppose? Voting so ordered. Being no further business, our next meeting will be next Monday at 6:00 p.m. The zoning subcommittee will meet at 4:30. Motion adjourned, all in favor? All oppose? Good night, everybody. Thank you.